Welcome to the Actogre meeting of the Village Planning Commission. I guess, three items we want to talk about. Just one is to mention that H2M, we requested the trustees to retain H2M and Cameron Engineering to look at the sewer treatment plan, and Frau Fritz to do the legal work related to the plan. And H2M and Cameron have got started, so that should be coming back to us soon with some of the initial thoughts for us to consider. And secondly, we talked about North Sea Road at our meetings, I guess, in the spring. And we all thought that there was a request by some of the property owners on North Sea Road to make it possible to do retail as a special exception use on North Sea Road between County Road 39 and Boden Square. And what we talked about is we thought that given the issues that came up in the hearing, that it would be a good idea to do a study to determine what made sense. The trustees asked the village planner, Chick Voorhees, to take a look at it, and they are working on that study. And I think that should be coming back to us fairly soon. And so we'll take a look at the study and think about what zoning changes are appropriate in that corridor. And I think we had looked at, as a corridor, as you know, that is now zoned mostly as a office, right, office, office business district.
Yeah, I think it should make a concern, is our concern with some Prospect Street to Boden Square, because the road is much narrower.
Right, correct.
And the traffic flow and the problem with the post office and Schmitz.
Right, and one thing we had asked them to do is look at the street in components, north of the railroad track to 39, and then Prospect Street to Boden Square, and then that little piece south of Boden Square. So, okay. And then third, and I think what we want to talk a little bit about tonight, and obviously we have been talking about, is the zoning issues that have come up, which the trustees have been asking us to take a look at. And those particularly relate to height, and obviously there have been some recent cases before the ARB. And it's been exacerbated by the situation with FEMA, where the height that you need to have for FEMA has been increased substantially since Hurricane Sandy, and now is basically a 15-foot height along the ocean. So, that's really changed the dynamic.
Yeah, but I think also would make a difference is, I think somebody was explaining to me, it's some places will be 15, some will be less.
Correct.
It depends on where it is.
Correct.
And I think we're going to have to look at a floating.
Right, right.
It can't be a rigid, it's going to have to be floating, you know, regarding the area that they're in.
Right, right, and because it's 15 feet now doesn't mean it'll be 15 feet in the future.
Yes.
So whatever we end up talking about and doing, or I should say, wrecking and amending, it can't be based on where FEMA is now, because we just have no way of knowing.
It's going to have to be some sort of formula or something that can be adapted to.
Right, 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 right. So, interesting enough, I mean, one of the things I did is I looked at 2006, when we last sort of amended the zoning code, which was a fairly significant at the time change in how the code worked in the smaller zones. And Eduardo and I were on the board at the time. And what was interesting is what we did then is, you may remember this, is we did an analysis of houses that had been built in the few years before that, and then gone through the approval process, and looked at their size and their height and a number of things that had happened. And out of that, actually came up with a code that generally tied the size of a house to the size of a lot, which was a significant change from, had happened until that time. And really, which was, I thought, very interesting to reread in the context of the issues coming up, basically said that there had been a history of taller houses in the village, and that the issue that we thought was coming up with the houses that were being built in 2002 through 2005, I guess this is really, was that the size of the house and the bulk was very different. And therefore, that's when we actually came to the idea of using a pyramid law, so that we thought at the time that the problem was not that the houses were too tall, as much as it was that the houses needed to set back as they go up and follow more traditional. So, I think, you know, what was interesting is the study turned out to be very useful in where we ended up on the zoning.
Yes, and I think it worked.
And worked.
Yeah.
And worked. So I think in the smaller zones, we think.
Worked fine.
Right, the zoning has generally worked and has, in most cases, you know, created something. And we know there may be some things we need to still, you know, there may be tweaks that come up as we understand more, but it generally has worked pretty well. Interestingly enough, you know, as we look at that, the question of, there are two things that did not come up at that time. One was, and I don't think we were aware of the issue, was how height was measured. So what we didn't look at at the time, and didn't really think a lot about, and didn't know was an issue, was where does the height start at, in effect?
Well, it was great, always was great.
We just assumed that. So there was no, I actually have them, have them in memos, it just never, it wasn't really an issue.
Never been.
Right, it was an issue that came up.
Was understood.
Right, right. We didn't know how the two feet was being applied at the time. And FEMA, obviously, this is before a lot of changes, it just was not, and the lots we were looking at were not really affected by FEMA, because they were generally to the north of Hill Street, and generally, not only to the north of Hampton Road. So, we didn't, and secondly, obviously, the houses we looked at were purely in the smaller zones. So, you know, one of the interesting things that we dealt with in that study, which I think may be helpful to look at again, was looking at setback rules and massing rules to try to begin to affect, in the smaller lots, how the houses affected there, the neighbors around them. So we came up, we changed the setbacks, we created the pyramid law in the smaller zones, and we made the garages separate to break up the bulk.
Well, we encouraged.
We encouraged, and actually, it's been done almost every time.
We changed the setback rules for the garage to cover it.
Right, right.
To pass garages.
And we allowed the detached garage, basically not to count against FAR, so we encouraged people to separate out the garages. And all those seem to have worked.
Yes.
More or less.
Yes.
So, I think, you know, as we look at this, the question is, can we do similar things in the, where there are the zones that are generally larger lots, although not purely larger lots?
Just expand the perimeter, I mean.
Right, maybe.
Well, I mean, we never thought for the larger lots that the problems really existed anyway.
Right, right.
Because, I mean, there's so much space between the houses and the land, and I think, I think what you're trying to get at with the problem in the lane is the narrow lots.
Correct, right.
But maybe this is a different issue, but I wouldn't put it across the board.
Right, right, right. And so that's one of the things we're going to need to look at, is, in the same way we did, I think, with the smaller zones, we were able to break the issue down and be more specific, and that's, I think, part of how we ended up with a consensus in that case, right?
Are there large lots on the ocean that are affected by FEMA?
They're all affected. Obviously, in the large lots, the, part of the difference, I think, is on the large lots, you have more choices of where to put the house. So, you know, it's just interesting, you know, you can really move the house around in a way that's different, and may have other impacts, but, you know, just, there's a, you know, it just, I think, I think one of the problems is, when you're on the ocean and you have a narrow or small lot, you have very few options where to put the house, and now you have a 15-foot rule before you start.
But not necessarily 15-foot, right? I mean, I mean, they always, I mean, they have seven feet, I think, above the ocean prior, right?
Traditional.
So the difference is in that extra seven or eight feet that we're talking about. But it doesn't affect all the lots, I would presume, like Bob said, some of them need it.
You have to have a floating, you can't have a rigid that will fit, because.
I think it's affecting most of them now.
I also heard that the New York State Pre-Board might increase from two to three. I've got to check on that, someone from another jurisdiction told me about that.
Right, right, that's why I think you're right, you know, ultimately, this is going to have to be a rule that's not dependent on where FEMA is today.
Right.
It really is about how do we want it to work, because it could change.
Right.
And probably will change over time.
It's also depending, and I think of that one that's near the Meadow Club, that was one of the first ones I was on a case, where they raised it 13 feet, and they've landscaped it so that you don't even notice it. And it's all depending on the landscaping and how they do it. Now, when you get to the real narrow lots, the ones down on Row D, that's where the smaller lots are, where the septic system has to be put, and you have a five-foot concrete wall containing all the septic system in front of it, and it's really limited amount of vegetation you can plant down here. That gets to be a little.
Can you, can you affect the grade by fill?
Yeah, but you're in wetlands there. I mean, they only have maybe six or seven feet, you know, and rest is wetland, and you can't fill in that.
So you can't fill.
It also gives you very few, again, very few options, the way you.
Yeah, I mean, you're really locked in down there.
Right. Now, you know, interesting enough, the, I think, when I first came on the board, I think you probably were on the board already, and with CMX Sammy was chairman, the Planning Commission did an overlay district on Meadow Lane on Bayside.
You weren't on the board then.
Yeah, I came in just as it was being approved, I guess. My first meeting, you were actually voting on it, I think. And it's interesting when you read that, because that's, I think, again, been fairly.
That was excellent.
Right, very successful, and it's, again, it's almost more form-based than anything else, right?
Look, it's not, it's not by the regulations, it's the recommendations, and they work.
Right, right, right. And that is another approach, is you do something that's more, in effect, encourages certain form in those districts, which is really what you did on the overlay district, right?
And is that available to architects and people that design houses?
Yes. So they come forward already.
So they have the recommendations and they have the regulations.
Yeah, and they work with that, and everybody seems to be in agreement with that. We haven't had any problems on the.
Except for sometimes.
Yeah, yeah.
It's good.
It's pretty quiet, so. So maybe we should give out the overlay district regulations, the study that was done in 2007 that we did for the, I guess, for the trustees, which was, went through the houses, and how we came up with the recommendations for the pyramid law and the setbacks and the garages and the, and basing things on the size of the lots.
And we should mention grade at this point, I guess.
And then the other issue is, right, so they, you know, and I think, you know, as the studies come, I think we'll learn more about this, but I think our code is much less specific about how you measure than the way many other localities have approached this issue, right? I mean, it's very, it's very, it's not very clear.
I think that's been the problem, I guess.
Right, that's clearly been the problem. So, I mean, if you read what the code says about height, it says 35 feet, and it's, it's a little, it's subject to interpretation, I guess, how you define where that starts from.
How's that, I mean, it does say from grade.
Yeah, but it doesn't say, it actually doesn't say where you measure grade, for example.
At the average, the average grade.
Right, but it doesn't say how to measure average, it doesn't say how the two feet applies. I'm serious, it doesn't say how the two feet applies, it's actually different. I know other codes, they're very specific about how it works. So, you know, you take, you know, the average of the street front, and then you take the midpoint, and, you know, people have been very specific, and then, so, you know, it's very, you know, the architect then knows exactly how to measure it. So, we don't, our code, which hasn't, hasn't actually, those provisions, the code, haven't changed, I think, since the 40s, actually.
But I think our original code for the height was meant for the overall village.
Correct.
That we're talking about a specific area down on the beach.
Right.
Which is a different, different set of values.
Right.
I keep thinking about that first case that we had to look at when I was at the ARB Board, and, you know, the problems they were facing.
Right.
And we granted them the, you know, the 13 feet plus, you know, whether they had to put a two-story house on top of it, and they graded it off and they landscaped it, it came out very well.
Right, right.
But they had the property. But when you get to the small lots, that, there's not much you can do. I mean, they have to raise the houses.
Right, right.
And so, it's going to, you can't, it's, again, like I said, you're going to have to have a floating ordinance. They're not saying that specifically you have to stay at this point, whereas you, on the ocean side, it might be 15 feet, on the Bayside, it might be 13 feet.
Right, we can't do a code that's based on, today it's 15 feet.
Yeah.
Where you have the code that says, this is how we want houses to work, and it will change as FEMA changes.
Yeah, but on the narrow lots, especially on, especially down on Meadow Lane, they have another problem, because you take the pyramid law, you go up five feet and 45-degree angle, but if they tell you they've got to raise it 13 feet up in the air.
Question is where the pyramid law applies from.
Yeah, and what you have to do is, they will have to look at going from where the federal flood management says their plane should have to be, and work it from there, and then try to keep it into some.
Right.
Because I also look at, when you get down to the area for firefighting, you know, you get into those areas, I mean, there's just swamp around it. So, all you have is a road to get to, and if you had to get into those buildings to save somebody, that, and plus, the septic systems now are in front of these houses against the road.
Right.
So you've got a five-foot concrete wall and all across the front of the building, you know, blocking your entrance or access to the house.
Right.
So these are things you have to look at.
By the way, it says the height is from natural grade.
Right, whatever that means.
Whatever that means.
Right. Seriously, that's the problem.
Whatever's there at the time.
You tell me, you know, that's not.
And I think that was meant for the heart of the village.
And then what I'm saying is, other places actually define it very specifically. So they say, so I'll use an example, one village I know, they say you take the area along the street, and you take the average height, and that becomes your grade. Now, at Meadow Lane, that would be very difficult, because you have all these sites that slope up to the ocean. I don't think that's the right thing.
Yeah, I was going to say.
But that is very specific. Then you know what you're talking about, right? One of the problems, I think, right now, since this is such, this provision the code is so old, is, so what is natural grade?
Yes, whatever's there at the time.
Where?
But it could be a variation over the lot.
Yeah, right, it could be.
Right, or more.
Well, an example, Prospect Street and North May Street.
Right.
You know, John Ducks is on top of the hill, and Il Pot Alley is at the bottom of the hill.
Right, 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 so which is natural grade.
Yeah, which is natural grade.
Natural grade is at the top of the hill.
Right, right. Well, see, some places would say you take the average of the two, and that becomes your grade. I'm not saying any of these are right, I'm saying, in most places, it's defined much more specifically, so that people know, and so I think one of the things that happens is, you know, sort of like what we did in the smaller lots, when you define it more specifically, hopefully, in most cases, you take away some of the controversy, because everyone understands what the rules are. I think one of the problems right now is when it's not so clear, and you, in effect, engender controversy, because not everyone will interpret it the same way, right? So, I mean, that's, that could be, you know, just maybe, in some ways, making it clearer what is, what we need.
Okay, but we're not looking to change the whole village, we're just looking.
Between the FEMA zone, the flood zone.
I think that's basically.
Basically, the flood zone.
That's going to be the overlay, right?
Right, although that's, just understand, I mean, you know, the flood zone goes up to, I think it's.
I know, it's bigger.
Yeah, it's not just the area.
I understand.
You know, it's going to go up to, I think it's Captain's Neck, I think? I'm trying to, I remember, I used to know. Flood zone goes pretty far.
As far as the FEMA flood zone, I mean, they're pretty specific there, because they say a certain height from sea level, I believe. So the natural grade does not.
Right, right, it's a different measurement.
So, I mean, so it's not even to be considered at this point, we're talking about it completely differently.
And it goes to force a crossing, so, you know, it covers a broader area than just Meadow Lane or Chin Lane.
Right, and it's probably.
And you have to assume all of those are going to end up with higher rules, as, you know, as people think about it.
Yeah, and it's going to expand, too. It will expand over time.
Right, right, yep.
Should we, as a group, go and take a survey of these areas, so we can visualize what we're talking about?
Yeah, I'd like to, is there a floodplain map that we could?
There is a floodplain map, which we should, it'd be a very good idea, let's bring it to the.
Well, Hitty Creek's a good prime example. I know that's in a floodplain.
Right, right, right.
And those houses on Hill Street, and then down Tuckahoe, that area down there, we just put a reservation, branches off of Tuckahoe, that area, they're up at the Bailey Road, I think, because I saw the map, because I was looking to see where my house is outside of it.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, yeah. So, and maybe do a little tour?
That's what I was suggesting, so that we all get a visual idea of what we're talking about, and pinpoint if there are problems, where there are problems.
Right.
I mean, it may turn out that the issue is only on 10% of the lots.
Right, right, for example, it may turn out that this is really an issue of smaller lots in the larger zone, right?
Maybe.
Maybe, who knows, but that may be.
But then, is the problem, what you're seeing from the street, is the problem, what the, I mean, if you have a large lot and a small lot, even if the small lot is high and you've got the large lot, the house is 300 feet away.
Right.
It's probably not going to be an issue.
Right.
It's when you have.
If you have three small lots together, then maybe it's an issue, I don't know.
Yeah, that'd be a couple of issues.
Maybe, but all three of them go high, so it's not an issue.
You're liable to have two on either side and one stay down.
Eventually, that's going to have to come up.
Yeah, I wouldn't want it to be too narrow, that's the only thing, not too narrow.
I'm trying to understand exactly what the issue is.
We find ourselves here again.
Right, right. Well, you know, one thing that's interesting in the bigger lot, so, you know, if you look at the house that Sugarman built on Meadow Lane, it's obviously a very big house, but because he has a larger lot, he was able to place it in a way that as it's been, as the landscaping has grown in, the house is actually, you could go down that street and actually not know the house is there.
Right.
Which is amazing, given the size of the house, right?
I don't think the issue was.
Part of the problem is when you get these narrow lots in that district, it really, the houses, it's very hard to hide those houses.
Yeah, you can't, they have no, they have no yard around them, you plant a shrub to hide them.
Right, and then maybe the problem is more like what we dealt with in 2006 in the smaller lots, which is, so you need other rules to deal with the, in those may be different, right?
Maybe.
Right.
Or when you get down to Row D, where those houses are, some are right bordering wetlands.
Right.
They can't plant anything, they can't touch it.
Maybe say a piece of harrison, maybe we should find out if there is a problem after all. Maybe some people complain, but there's a big problem to start with.
Well, that's what the study would look at.
Right.
And part of the study is saying, is going to say, now that you have these new rules, what is that going to mean for what happens?
What's going to happen with the line.
Right, because, you know, part of the, I think one of the goal here would be, let's not get to where we got to in 2004, which is we're doing zoning after, right? But try to do as much before, we're trying to catch this failure early in the process, right?
Which is a good idea.
Well, we have to address the flood zones, they should be addressed.
Yeah.
I mean, so that people could know.
Right, right, I was going to say, the other thing that I think, you know, is, the other side of it is, since the rules are fairly vague now, making them more specific allows people to buy a, buy a house, understand what they can do, not be subject to, as much subject to a political process, because they, you know, the rules are clear, and that's generally happened in the smaller lots. Generally, people, you know, know what they're doing, and, right? So, I think we're trying to do the same thing here, is try to make clear what you can do.
So when are we going to take the tour?
Uh, we'll try to set that up at the next.
Yeah, because if I don't do that, next meeting, it's, when are we going to take the tour?
Well, I mean, it could be individually done, I mean.
All right, so we're all together, we all, and we can also.
You're going away at the end of the month.
We also can, like.
We'll try to do it before the end of the month, yeah?
Good, want to pick a date?
Uh, sure.
All right.
Before the time zone changes?
Before the time zone, right. How about a week from Saturday?
A week from where?
Um.
Next weekend is Columbus weekend, I'm not here.
Okay, so that's not going to work, so the weekend after that, maybe.
Yeah, would work.
19th, I'm not being here, I mean, love. Does that have to be a weekend? It'd be like on a Friday, on Thursday, at 5:00, for example, like we do our meetings?
Well, 5:00.
I mean, weekends, the people are.
Yeah, I know, 5:00 is tough, though, with the light, even now.
Yeah, it's the same.
It depends upon how extensive it is.
I mean, it's, it's, I mean, it's still light out.
Yeah.
If you don't wait till November, if you go in October, it'll be fine.
Are you here at that time, though, Paul? I mean, people that live in New York might not be here.
How about Friday, the 17th, at 5:00?
Uh, yeah, sure, that looks for me.
Or 4:00, something like that.
4:30, yeah, 4:00.
It's fine.
Yeah.
It's a good day.
Yeah. Eldon, Robert, any thoughts, any reactions to all this?
Are you also going to look at historic district issues that are kind of creeping up, or?
You know, I think that's something we need to talk about, so it's a good question, it's a very good question.
Because it seems to be a bunch of controversy.
Right.
You know, what you can build, and then all the architectural issues come up.
Right, right. I mean, I guess, you know, one thought I have is, you know, looking through sort of recent cases at the ARB, you know, there's, part of the problem, I think, and why I think it's getting so difficult, is there's both zoning and architectural issues mixed in, but certainly some of the things that people bring up in these cases are zoning issues. So, that's not really in there, that's not really what they're meant to do, right? They're not really a board that's meant to review zoning, for example.
To talk about the ARB?
Yeah. So, you know, you're right. So, you know, what happens is, and I think often, the things that are not specific in the code, then they are suddenly dealing with something where, and the funny way this process works here is, you don't, by the time the building gets to them, it's already been, in effect, signed off by the building department.
Right, that's right.
So they can't really change it.
Right.
Right? So, they're in this funny circumstance where people have already signed off, it may be different than what was originally intended in the code, but it's already been signed off, and then, they're, you know, but they're, but their actual purview is much more, should be, and was meant to be, much more architecturally static.
Yeah, but if it doesn't meet the zoning, then that's going to be zoning board.
It often has, has got to the zoning board.
No, I guess, my question was, you know, seems to be, you know, there's, the controversy seems to be, you know, what does historic district mean in terms of what you can build?
Right.
And more fundamentally, you know, is there, you know, in a sense compatibility, what does that mean?
Right.
I mean, so there's a view that says, well, that means it has to look like an older house, it's a view that says, it can look like whatever is appropriate, and then you get, I mean, there's, see, there's no clarity, and the ARB kind of, you know, sitting there and said, well, you know, we don't really, we don't know, you know, almost like, we don't know what the.
So, you know, it's interesting, so, you know, in a way, we did it with the smaller zones without doing it, and, and what I mean by that is, by putting in rules like the pyramid law, you're in effect create a, you create a aesthetic o- o- envelope, and it was a way of doing it without trying to overdo the manic control.
The other thing is that zoning often affects historic districts, because if you have a lot of bulk left over, you have more tendency for people to apply to demolished buildings. If your, if your existing envelope matches your zoning fairly closely, um, you have less likelihood you don't wanna tear buildings down, so, this is what happens.
And, and then I, I also seen where you have, with, with some villages, towns have incentives to encourage.
Correct.
To encourage you, if you keep, if you improve or tear it down, you get this bonus.
Right.
That, I mean, depending what goal you wanna achieve.
Right, right.
But I, I thought we were going to discuss areas of interpretation.
Right, correct.
So, for example, uh, sometimes when there's a pre-existing condition.
Right.
Um, what, how can you extend that pre-existing non-conforming condition, and how exactly is that interpreted, or?
I think right now, you're losing it.
Yeah, but there are, I think there are times which you, you get to use both your pre-existing non-conforming condition, plus you get the bonus of the new zoning, whatever the zoning is today.
Right.
So, there are ways that people can, that that can be used, to get a larger structure.
Right.
Um, there's sometimes issues around roof pitch.
Right.
And what's a flat roof?
Yeah.
People using, you know, so I think there are some things which aren't necessarily changes to the intent of the code, but just notifications, which I thought was one of the things we were thinking about.
Yes, absolutely, I mean, I think one of the things we generally wanna do is in cases where we think, and height is an easy example, the code is not clear, or the way it's being applied is not clear, some of what we might be, because I think we're, we're saying as many of the changes we're gonna talk about are really tweaks to things we've done earlier, but clearly, part of the problem is how it's being interpreted, and, and I know, we've see, and one thing we're hearing from some of the other boards is, the way people are interpreting things is now varying, and they're finding it hard to decide what they should be doing, um, and height's a good example of that. So, if you, if you were very clear, this is how we want you to measure it, then you're gonna have some of the problems, you're not gonna have some of the problems you have now, same thing with the, you know, I think some of the roof issues, if, if we were somewhat clearer, and I don't think there are a lot of things, but with somewhat clearer, it's gonna help in the interpretation, without a doubt, um, so, I, you know, I, I know Rick's working on that, Rick, Rick, Pete, Pete is working on that also.
And have you been speaking to the building inspector at all?
Uh, you know, there, there, there are, there are con- con- conversations going on, but again, you know, so, on height, what's happened over time is, in the absence of a very clear code, there's been all, there's been twenty years of interpretate, interpretation, which is part of the reason I think now we need to be very clear what's meant.
I think so too.
Right.
Right, and we just, I gave out something, I think, a meeting or two ago, 'cause, um, you know, we had, uh, the Southampton Association, which I also.
Right.
Serve on, had hired a consultant, and we had looked at a number of these things.
Right, right.
And then just compared them to other villages, so, I'm not saying that all of these things are things we can trust, but I think we should at least look at them and just understand.
One thing that I did notice is both Bridgehampton, well, Bridgehampton, Sag Harbor, and East Hampton were all very specific on what you measured from, they were, they were much clea- much, there were, there was more clarity about where, where the measurement started, um, that's one thing that really jumped out at me in that piece, um, you know, without a doubt, it's just, which I think, again, I, I, you know, so, so, and, and one of the reasons, I guess, you know, which, I, I'm thinking, maybe we look at the pyramid code being, being applied more broadly, is, you know, one of those funny results is, and that's what we found in the smaller zones, if you try to just do height, you end up with flat, flat roof house after flat roof house after flat roof house, right?
Up with boxes.
Right, you end up with boxes, so, just, just alone dealing with height is a different, now, in Bridgehampton, where it's almost all new houses along the ocean, it may not matter so much, right? Because that is the, sort of, the, the context in Bridgehampton, um, in our village, that would, that, that is really, I think, and we're seeing that with, a lot, most of the recent houses along Meadow Lane that are coming to the ARB are flat roof houses, right? Um, because that's, they're maxing out the, the envelope.
How about parking?
And parking, so let's talk a bit about parking, sorry, I didn't meant to do that, so, parking is the other issue we've been asked to look at, um, again, I looked back at, and I'll, 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 I'll get copies for next time, the memo we did in two thousand six, um, we actually, in the memo, there's a, there's enough a line where we say, the other can, one, one of the reasons we said it was useful to start to look at lot size as controlling size, is, um, that you would have a natural control on size from the, from the parking regu- regu- regulations, and of course, that's not what happened, we know that's not what happened, so, so I agree, so the other thing I think we wanna look at, which I think may be a much easier, of all the things we're looking, the, a reasonably easier fix is being clear on how you measure parking, and again, the code is not specific, just not specific.
And how do you, how do you accommodate it, I guess, or is that not our concept?
Well, that's the same issue, basically, which is, so, you know, we like, like, basically, I think, almost every village say, you know, you need a certain number of spots per.
Per bedroom.
Yeah, so that, you know, that's not a bad thing.
But if you still measure it as parallel parking?
The question is how you, and again, this is something we're in our own code, we're, we're not specific about, what is a space, right?
Well, and how's, yeah.
Right.
And how are spaces configured on?
Right, 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 so, whereas with the garages, we were very specific, and if you read all the new code we did, we were very specific about form, what you counted, had the roof, had the, right, I mean, we really covered the very specific rules.
I've seen some regs where they, they, they add sort of a factor to the parking space to deal with circulation.
Right. Which we don't, we haven't done.
Right, so the parking is not like a long line of, where you have to have attendance back every car out, right?
Right.
So, if you add the factor that deals circulation, you're gonna avoid that, that crazy measurement.
Right.
And you're gonna deal with, with the movement of cars.
Yeah, with like a court or something.
Yeah.
Some, some way to go.
So, there's, there's some factor, you know, a space of two hundred feet, then you need three hundred feet, or something like that.
Of, of circulation space.
Circulation space, for every space, right, so it kinda forces the issue.
Right, right.
Do historic districts automatic, I mean, do you have to apply for a so-called historic district, do you have to make an application for one, or is this, is this, I know.
You're talking about to create a historic district?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a process, you need to do a study, um, the study will show that, you know, you have buildings that are important, or, 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 or contributing, whatever.
That was already done years ago.
Yeah, the village did it a while, a long time ago.
And they never approved it, expanding it.
Right, there was an expansion study done that was never acted on.
Okay.
So, there's the existing historic district, and then there was a study.
Yes, when I was on a board, we, we presented to the village board, and they would not expand the district.
Right, that was never acted on, that showed potential.
But like a neighborhood could apply for one on their own, no, yes?
Well, ultimately, or, it would have to be approved by the trustees, and they, you have to do an environmental review, which, you know, is partially why you have to do a study that shows why you think it's a historic district.
All right, and those have federal rules, right?
Yes.
Historic.
Secretary, I forgot, the secretary is something I care.
Secretariat as, as interpreted through the state historic preservation office.
But now, a property owner can register their house as an historic house, and they don't need an approval, do they?
Well, that's a different, different process, and it, that doesn't have, that has no zoning implication.
The only thing that might do is give you tax benefits.
No, I understand, I understand, but like, say, hey, you take a little street, and each house has been put on the historic register, but it's not an historic district, but each house is on the historic register, so then somebody comes in and wants to build a new house, do these people have, these property owners, if they have objections to the new house, do they have, I mean?
No.
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 The only thing that gives you protection from a zoning point of view is if you create a historic district.
Okay.
Right. And ultimately, historic districts don't necessarily mean you can't alter or tear down a house, it's a process you have to go through.
Right, I know, and I understand, but there's, there's all, there's all these little things, you know, there are, there are some things.
Sure.
But, I, I, I mean, this is what I see, and I think the big, hot issue is there, you know, when the words are, the codes say, it has to be compatible, and no, and no one has a clue what that means.
Right, right.
I mean, exactly, and that's up to John Foster, basically, to determine.
No, 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 that's the ARB.
Right, and they, and they don't know what I mean, because no one really knows.
But it already comes to the ARB already, already drafted.
No, but the compatible issue is the architecture issue.
I guess compatible means similar to, right?
Well, that's what, no, no, that's what you'd say, but, but no one, but you.
Well, let me use.
How would you make it more specific about?
I, I, I don't know.
It's statewide.
Okay, that's, that's the question.
No, no, I mean, it's, but it's an issue, if you look at every ARB meeting now, it's, that issue is up every single.
How would you define then the architecture, other than saying compatible, similar to what's already there?
It's a very difficult issue, so, you know, very, very often, it's looked at in terms of materials.
You bring up the issue, then you have to have a solution, otherwise.
Right, and do we really wanna legislate architecture, that gets, exactly.
You can't.
Well, up to a certain point, 'cause we already did it for the.
Yeah, I mean, it's historic districts by their nature.
Well, the historic district you did, that was, that was my question, that was my question.
Beyond, you know, sizes, you get involved in materials, I don't think so, I mean, you know, in, in design, I mean, I can get.
When you get into a historic district, it, it does specifically say that you have to use certain type of materials, you have to basically go along with the rest of the neighborhood.
And the secretary is the standards for renovation.
Right, right.
There are, it is referenced in the, in our code.
Right.
Um, and there's a large body of interpretation that's been used nationally for thirty years.
Right.
Around what that means and how you interpret it, and it's interpreted differently in different jurisdictions.
Right, one of the things that I think gets confusing is that I think people believe, generally, that com- compatible means the same architecture.
Correct.
But in fact.
Correct.
If you look at the interior rules, compatible means the same materials, and in fact, interestingly enough, often, and I'm not always the case, clearly not always the case, but often, the, the, the more orthodox, if you will, historic preservationists would say, you never should, if you're building today, the house should be clear that it's not a building from the eighteen nineties, it should be clear that it's a house on the current day.
Okay.
So, compatible is, is definitely subject to interpretation.
And I can tell you, if you listen, you listen to everything, there's not a single person who can, who can agree on what that means.
No, there isn't.
But what, but again, I think what we did on the small lots that was really helpful is, in effect, took away some of the heat of the issue by forcing people to build in a traditional envelope.
Mm-hmm, that helps.
Which then makes, if you're doing more modern materials or, or a way of interpreting it, is not as bad, because you're creating an envelope that is like the other envelopes in that street, so, you know, we looked at post crossing and Elm Street, and it's amazing, I should look back at this, and we said, you know, what's, what's, what was unique about those streets is that there was a, a basic envelope people used, and that's why on those streets, people were not, you know, we had all this controversy, and then you looked at post crossing, there were all these taller houses, why were people not bothered, because it was an envelope and a context, which got repeated over and over again.
Well, but then if you look at Burnett Street now, and there was large controversy over Burnett Street.
Right.
If you've been down there now, you know, the, the, the house that was approved, it has major problem, major opposition, but it sticks out like a sore thumb.
Right.
But not to say that, you know, in ten years, as, as houses turn over and get rebuilt, that it won't.
Right, right.
But right now, it does.
Right, well, one of the.
So, compatible, you know, I'm gonna go compatible, well, you know, maybe the shingle house materials, okay, but, as, you know, what is your interpretation?
Well, I mean, I think one thing we did say back then, and, you know, we could decide differently now, was, look, this village has this history of this certain type of house, and there was a period of time when very different houses were being built, we're not gonna legislate that you have to build.
No, you can't.
This same house that was built for a period of time, that was very different than this house that was historically built in the village.
You know, they're property rights, you know, people have a right.
Right, and also that, what made the village unique was the fact you had actually these houses that were built, you know, during the century, and that created a real built form here.
I know, we're talking about the, the, uh, you know, the, the district that he's referring to, it's kinda different.
Right, right.
Than what we're talking about, I mean, one thing is the normal zoning, another thing is.
But, but I think that there's in many jurisdictions, you know, especially if it's in, in Boston or in Europe, the facade and the streetscape belongs to the people, doesn't mean, when you are, so to, if you wanna paint your house pink, or is it really properly right? When you're inside, you don't see it, you're really impacting the people in the street, and, and when you walk in the street, you wanna have some, something that feels like a context.
Right, right, right.
So, you know, I think.
See, that's what we did from Sag Harbor, Sag Harbor, the ARB board's interested in what they're doing inside the house as well.
No, inside is.
They're regulating inside the house. I think they, they do the regulation, 'cause we were looking into it.
But I think the streetscape, I mean, there is a strong point, for us to regulate the streetscape, and Burnett, you have, suddenly you have somebody builds a house that's completely different, you know, you break the, the nature and the context and the historical value.
Yeah, but that's, that's where you're looking at a pre-existing neighborhood.
Right.
That's basically all small houses, and somebody puts this monster in the middle of it, and that is not what you call conforming.
Well, you know, it depends, because that whole neighborhood may change over time, and all the houses are conforming to what the neighborhood was.
Well, that's all right.
It's what's happening on Pulaski.
Historic is gonna change.
On Pelletro, Pelletro, Pulaski.
Yeah, that's happening down there.
There, there's also, they're replacing small houses for very large homes.
Right, but you know, to some extent, zoning, you can necessarily respond to every change in the economy, and zoning doesn't, I would argue that the reason people are building those houses is not gonna change, right, so, what people want now is not what people necessarily wanted in nineteen fifty-eight, so, what you can do with zoning is try to put that under control and make it.
Right.
In context of the neighborhood as much as you can.
You can't tell people, you have to build a ranch house, 'cause you have a ranch house next to you, I mean, that doesn't work.
A street, a streetscape, I, you know, variable, is a nice variable.
Right, right.
It is, it's a nice variable.
Well, we're talking about the historic district, I mean, with the inversion to all, all over the place, but the historic district, I think that's a different issue.
No, no, I know, I said it's a little different.
Right, right.
And the historic district, it, it, just tell me the boundaries again?
Oh, it's very complicated, that's not the simple answer, the flood zone's a little easier, it's a, it goes up streets, down streets, it's, you know.
Oh, okay, so it's like a little chock-a-block, jagged, really?
Yeah.
So, it's not like from, you know, the main to the.
No, no, because you literally have to do a study and say, this is why we think it merits being in a historic district.
Study was already done, where they surveyed all the buildings, they went around and inspected them, and they made you recommendations, this is, this area should be incorporated in a historic district, but the village board did not act on it.
That was for the expansion, right?
Yes.
Right.
Wow, how did you like the study that they did of Highway thirty-nine that we waited for?
Yeah, that was very upsetting, but just, you know, it's interesting you bring it up, because, you know, they, I think, shockingly misused and mischaracterized the studies that were done, partially for the planning commission and for the trustees, some of the, the, they have the association help to fund, they just completely mischaracterized and misstated and slandered those studies, it was, it's extraordinary, extraordinary.
So, watch what happens with the CVS building in Bridgehampton, because that'll be the, that'll be the exception.
Well, that's not in the highway business.
Bridgehampton, not too happy about it.
No, but it's spot zoning.
No, but the County Route thirty-nine study is really the stretch between the canal, the, yeah, the canal and.
Well, I understand, and that's just a, a tool for decisions about what goes on there.
Right, except it's, then doesn't say much about what you actually should do.
No, it doesn't, so that's what I mean, you, you, you watch what the town does with that.
Yeah, I mean, but, but they, but they basically took a study that really said that, um, there was a, you know, that there were certain gaps in the retail landscape here, and that putting them in the village center would create, you know, impacts on other businesses, and just completely twisted that.
And now, and they said, and, and, and if they do things on thirty-nine, you know, the side roads become great arteries. Oh, good.
'Cause I understand that the highway was always set up years ago as automotive wholesale distribution, as an outlet for things that you didn't want in the village.
Right.
And now, over time, it's just being.
Well, you know, it's actually even worse than that in a way, the, the, the whole concept of County Route thirty-nine is you have a limited access road that is, as you may know, if you, when you drive on it, all those signs, it's the coastal evacuation route for the Hamptons.
Right, it is.
Right, and so, so a big piece of it was, you had uses along the road that did not create too much traffic, so that if it needed to be used for coastal evacuation, you know.
It was free.
Right, it also allowed, since, since you're never gonna build a real highway out here, um, it allowed you to get that road to work as best you could within the context of the demand, by not having high traffic uses on it, and somehow.
So, now the side roads become.
See, you see, County Route thirty-nine, when I was a kid, they were building it, that was a bypass to Southampton, prior to coming down Sabonic Road, you had to go down North Sea Road.
Right.
All the way into the village, to Hampton Road, and then down Hampton Road to Watermill to get to Montauk.
Right.
There was no road going through.
Right.
Or you came down through Hampton Base, uh, Hill Street, all the way down Pine Street, Meeting House Lane, to Old Town, Old Town over to Hampton, and then on, and that's the way you went.
It was just, what, but there was no road there at all, there must have been.
No, it was all farmland.
Yeah, no, that was all farmland, yeah, that was not a road.
I remember they built it.
Probably wasn't that much traffic back then, either.
It's, it's actually called a bypass, the, the official name is, so that, you know, if you, all you need to know is the official name, it's called the County Thirty-Nine Bypass, 'cause the whole idea was, you allowed traffic to bypass the more congested areas, and so the zoning was very. was very deliberate, it wasn't an act, you know, the study makes it sound like it was some accidental zoning, it was very deliberate, it was, these are low-traffic uses, commercial uses, that you'll have on this road that won't impede the flow of traffic.
That's right.
Like an auto dealer, or like a home, you know, a home furnishing store, or things that, not things like grocery stores that by their nature are very high-traffic, lots of in and out, right?
Yeah, but, but now we have the Suffolk Federal, which I guess, a credit union, it's out of bank, I don't know.
Yeah, well, banks generally are considered low-traffic.
But I believe things like the PC Richards were considered wholesale, or they got into that interpretation because they sold their trade.
Correct, yeah, yeah. Right, and generally, in a lot of places, electronic stores, for whatever reason, I'm not sure why, are not defined as retail, it's funny, you know, banks are not, electronics are...
I wouldn't say PC Richards, a bank is a heavy volume.
It's not, it's not.
Not like throwing a supermarket.
Correct.
Well...
Right, it's not the sort of thing people go to every day, or three or four times a day, right?
Mm-hmm.
Most of us don't buy television that often, so, you know, once every five years we go, it's a little different, seriously, so that was the whole idea, that was the whole concept of the road, that, you know, it was uses that would not impede traffic.
There were hotels and not, no, no restaurants particularly.
I think, yeah, I think...
There were motels.
Yeah, motels, yeah.
Just restaurants.
Yeah, there are some restaurants.
No, I know, not, not so many, but, you know, not so many.
Yeah, but we, we allow restaurants in our office to, district, that's fairly classic again, those are typical, so, it's just, it was...
I, I was underwhelmed, and I was a little perturbed.
I was perturbed by the way they misused the work that was done for the, it was very disturbing.
Yeah, I didn't like it.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's going to be used, so...
So, we shall see, so, yes, parking, I, I, yes, and we should, in our tour, we might want to look at actually one of the streets where this is happening, either Little Plains or Woolley, or one of the streets where you really see what's going on with parking.
Is this the proper season?
Be a little less, but it's still on a weekend, or even on a Friday, I think you'll see some of it, but you're right, summer it's much worse, but it is...
Yeah, but in, in the summer, you got a lot of visitors, too, so, I mean...
Yeah, but you have to provide parking.
You have the problem, yeah, but you'd have the problem anyway, I mean, we have a lot of visitors.
Yeah, well, what they're doing is, for example, that they say the garages are parked parking, and I know they converted garages over living space.
Correct.
Now, what you got to do is say the garage cannot be counted as parking spaces.
Right, I think so.
And I think that's going to be taken away from it.
I think so, too.
And that way, you will control some of this parking.
Well, or you say, or, or the odd, the other option, you say, if you're going to count the garage, you can't count the space in front of the garage as a parking space, but you can't do it twice.
Right.
So, you want to put the garage parking, fine, but then don't say that the driveway in front of the garage can be restricted parking.
And you have to control the number of cars and the number of bedrooms.
I have three cars, and I can have two in the garage.
Yeah, but then, how many children do you have, Ed?
I have three.
Three, that's three more cars.
Not yet.
No, I already have three cars.
And, and do you park in the garage, you park in the garage all the time?
Of course, I put two cars in the garage.
Okay, because, you know, use our garage for parking.
Oh, that's no problem.
And you have to buy cars for them yet? What, then, you have to buy cars for them yet?
At one time I had four cars, but I still had another garage.
Maybe I can get another car, but I have plenty of parking.
You know, I have two basic rules, the, the fancier the kitchen, the less likely it is that anyone ever cooks in it.
Absolutely.
And my other rule is, the bigger the garage, the less likely it is that anyone ever parks in it.
That's right, that's right.
So, it's amazing, like, okay, so, but, but parking's definitely, and, and you look, I, I mean, Woolley's a good example, right, very good example, it's, it's jamper cars now.
Such a narrow street, such a narrow street.
And Little Plains, I can tell you, you never saw a car on that street.
No, you never did.
Now, you see cars all the time.
All the time.
Because those houses are being built with five or six bedrooms.
All the time, that's right.
Seven.
Seven bedrooms in one case, and there's not, there's no par, there's no real parking, so...
Well, I think what's happening with, with the economy is that people are buying houses which were village houses, and they're becoming weekend houses, so you need the parents, two or three children, a nanny, and then you need your guests, which is at least two rooms, so people want to have a seven-bedroom house, but they can't afford a, a large estate lot, so they're, you're going to put that use into a smaller lot.
And the other thing, which is good in some ways, is people want to be in the village again, so, you know, that person who, 20 years ago would have said, I, I want to build a big house in the woods, you know, where I can get a lot of land, is now saying, I want to be in the village, which is great, but...
So, I can walk.
Right, so I can walk, or my kids can bike.
And leave my car on the road.
Or my kids can bike, or whatever, right, but it's just, you know, I, parking's definitely an issue we need to, as part of this reform.
Yes, we should define the, the parking space then.
Right, right.
And circulation.
All right, so, do you want to, do you want to take the initiative of writing down where we should go on this little tour? You want to be our tour guide?
No, I'm not that familiar.
You want me to be the tour guide? I'll be, we'll, we'll work out a tour, okay?
Not that familiar.
Did you get the maps on the map?
Right, and we'll have the flood happen for that.
You have the maps, right, so maybe we should...
And I write, it's forced crossing on that side of the village, and it's...
Captain's Neck?
Captain's Neck on the other side of the village, for a big piece, and then it goes further north.
I think it's going to meet here, right?
Yeah.
Is North Ox pasture, is that, is that the northern limit?
No, I think it's further.
Farther north.
Further north, there's a section.
There's anywhere in this water.
And the whole village center is in the flood zone.
That's right, that's true.
The whole village center is in the flood.
The whole flood and village center, and it does flood.
Sure does.
It does flood.
The flood plan I looked at goes up to Bailey Road.
Yeah.
Where the village line is, goes down, Actus Colony, all the way up to Bailey, stops the Bailey Road, and then cuts, cuts along the north side of Hill Street.
And actually, you know, it's interesting, when we talk about height, because it's an issue that hasn't, people haven't talked about, but I definitely see it happening now, on Halsey Neck now, which a lot of it is in the flood zone, there's a bunch of new houses, and they're all being raised, have you noticed that?
Are they?
Yeah, they're all being raised.
Oh, I haven't seen.
No, I, I...
Because if you go down Halsey Neck, you go Halsey Neck down sort of south of Catherine's Neck.
Right.
On the left-hand side, a bunch of houses have been sold, they were basically ranch houses, they're being replaced with bigger houses, and I suddenly realized the other day, they're all now being raised.
Wow.
So, you're going to, this issue...
With the, the basement being higher, or...
So, the house now is starting, you know, where the house used to, where all those houses started here, and now they're all suddenly starting here, so...
So, is there a basement?
I don't know, I don't know, what's, what's interesting...
It depends on where you are in that street.
A lot of feet floods.
Some of them have basements, and some, some don't.
There's a lot of flooding on that street.
Yes, a lot of flooding.
But what's interesting is now, and you're just beginning to see it, I think it's going to be very evident this winter, some of those houses are actually now are sort of looming a bit, because they're now suddenly all being raised.
And those are the bigger lots, right?
No, these are the similar issue, these are not very large lots, so, you know, on Halsey Neck, these are, I would guess, acre, acre and a half lots.
Are these closer to the ocean, or closer to Hill Street?
Closer to the ocean.
Okay.
But, you know, there's a, there's a bunch of what were, you know, they were probably divided up, and they were, they were like ranch houses on them.
Yeah, they were.
Right?
Most of those lots are pretty wide, though, also.
They're wide, but not deep.
But not deep.
I'm not saying they're especially bad, it's just interesting, you see now, correct, Great Plains South, sorry, Great Plains South, yes, exactly, on the east side of the road.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yes, yes.
There's a, there were like five or six ranch houses, they were all coming down.
I remember when they put that development in.
Yeah?
The road used to go around, I forgot the name, but it used to come from Halsey Neck Lane all the way around and come out to Meadow, Meadowmere Place, it was an L-shaped street, and it just kind of all overgrown there.
Right.
In fact, they just built a big massive house.
Yes.
But you, you can't really see it, you can see it from Cooper's, but you can't see it from any other place, so it's not really impacted, and it's a private road.
Yeah, but this is right on the street, and it's just, what I noticed, which was interesting, was just suddenly these, so there was a house built about five years ago on that street, in the middle, and it's the same as all the other houses, and then suddenly, in the last year, the new houses they've built are like, suddenly up higher, so, which is only a way of saying, this is not only a beach issue, this is going to be an issue throughout that neighborhood, right?
It's a floodgate issue.
As new houses come up.
It's insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, do you want to call the meeting?
You want to discuss...
Mark, do you want to talk a little bit about the sewer, the next steps?
Well, the next step is going to be to actually formalize, the, the contracts are out to be signed.
Right, yep.
By the consultants, so we expect them to be signed in the next couple of weeks, wrap it up, at that point, we'll, we maybe should invite one of them to come, and then...
Can we arrange that, we should arrange that.
And then at that point, it's, the first step is going to be the finalization of the sewer district, that's really the first step.
Right, right.
So, there's the boundary lines, the, the technical aspect where, which system, the Septic, you know, where we're putting this pump station, it's kind of secondary, the first step is going to be to finalize whether we should incorporate the flash, whether we should incorporate or remove the apartments.
Correct.
The apartment complex, whether we should, you know...
So, you think for the next monthly meeting, they could come, maybe invite one of the lawyers to come also, we could go through the map and what's, talked about being included or not included?
And the question is that, do you believe, do you think that the public should be, maybe, should we...
The second time.
Yeah, we should put a notice up on the village website that we're doing it, and...
I, I think you're going to have problems with the location.
Yeah.
No matter where you put it in the village, you're going to have problems, guaranteed, Mark.
No, I'm talking about the, first, the district boundaries.
I mean, district boundaries, I mean, that is like staring us right in the face.
Yes, yes, I understand, I understand, but, but, you know, there's, I believe that once you understand something, you're less likely to judge it, so, once you understand the rationale and why we picked that location, you know, and where, the fact that we have studied thoroughly every other possible location, that this is really the best location.
But I agree, let's, I agree with you, let's do boundaries first.
Yeah, let's do boundaries first, I think, and mitigate the, the, the blowback.
Right, because again, with, the basic theory of this is the boundaries would more or less, and it's not going to be that precise.
Right, it is.
But the village, the boundaries would more or less follow the village business district where we've examined the zoning.
It gives us something to look at, yeah.
And have some sense of what shouldn't, shouldn't be.
I think you already have pretty much like consensus to leave out the condominiums